Good evening. It's Tuesday, July 23rd at 7:00 PM and we're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. And I call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Barb Stockhausen?
Yes.
Barb Dos?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Robin Klein?
Here.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing on the annexation and rezoning of 275 West Business Highway 151. We'll start with staff presentation. Joe?
Okay, thank you. Yes, this is regarding a request to annex a portion of the Chamber of Commerce property at 275 West Business Highway 151. The chamber's property is actually two parcels. The eastern part where the office building is, is already located in the city. The western portion where Katie's Garden is located, is actually located in Platteville Township. So their request is regarding the western portion of that property. The area to be considered is, it's a 2.16 acre property in size. It is contiguous to the municipal boundaries on two sides. It's kind of a triangular portion. So the eastern boundary as well as the northern where it borders up to Business Highway 151, that's municipal boundary. So it does meet the requirements for annexation. This is a request for direct annexation by unanimous approval, which means there's only one property owner and they are the petitioner for this request. There are no residents of that property, so there's no public hearing actually required for the annexation part of it. But as long as we're doing that, there is a requirement to change the zoning of the property because it's going from ET zoning to city zoning. So it makes sense. It's much cleaner to do it at the same time. So their request is to zone it to B3 Highway Business, which is the same zoning district as the current chamber property, as well as most of the businesses along Business Highway 151. Those properties are also B3 Highway Business. So it's the most logical zoning for that property. The request, as I mentioned, it's fairly straightforward. It does meet the requirements from a statutory standpoint for annexation. And the rezoning would be the logical request for that property. So staff would recommend approval of the annexation and the rezoning. The planning commission considered this request at their July 1st meeting and also recommended approval of the annexation and the rezoning. Any questions?
Questions? Is this all one plot? I mean, is there a certified survey map that maps the whole thing? Or is it still two lots?
Still two parcels. So it would just bring the second one into the city.
Other questions?
I wanted to ask Delta 3 something, but I can do that later.
So we'll have the applicant statement. Are you, does Delta 3 represent the applicant? Okay.
Dan Drossen's, Delta 3 Engineering, representing the chamber.
Question?
Your question.
My question is a side question. A chamber building, is it located in the floodplain or the floodway? Because I asked it also because of B, Delta 3 is down there. And in previous experience, I know the water has been as high as across 151 in front of my property. So that's pretty high. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, Delta 3, we're out of the floodplain. We had a Loma done to remove us from the floodplain. The chamber, I'm not sure if it's ever had the need to have that done, just because there's never been a loan for it. But I know the part that we're annexing in, the majority of that is in the floodplain. That's Katie's Garden. But I'm not 100% sure about the building itself.
Because none of those buildings have been flooded through the years.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other applicant statements? Any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, Joe's kind of covered it all, so. Thank you.
Okay, I have no one who's registered public statements in favor. I have no one who's registered a public statement to give a public statement against. And in fact, I have nobody who's registered to make a general statement. So council discussion is then the next thing.
This is something that we've been wanting to do for a number of years. So I'm for it.
Helps to get our stream bank improvement going. All right, so the next item would be a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by Ken and a second by Barb Stockhausen. We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I hear of council action?
I move to approve the annexation and rezoning of 275 West Business Highway 151.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen, second by Isaac, to approve the annexation and rezoning of the property at 275 West Business Highway 151. We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to me if you prefer separate discussion on any of these items. First, we have the council minutes from July 9th. Second, payment of bills. Third, appointments to boards and commissions. And tonight I have four, five actually. I'm appointing to the Commission on Aging for their second three-year term, Josephine Kisher and Deborah Browning. To the Freudenreich Animal Care Trust Fund for his first term, David Ralph. To the Tourism Committee, Deborah Rice. And to the Transportation Committee, this one would be effective September 1, 2019. So this is an early appointment of William Erickson, E-R-I-C-S-E-N. Beyond appointments to boards and commissions, we have licenses, MRK Rock for the premises at 130 Market. Tina Jarrett for the premises at 75 North Second Street, known as the Gym. And Doherty Enterprises for the premises at 65 East Business Highway 151, that's Country Kitchen. We also have taxi driver licenses and one and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken, a second by Robin, to approve the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions of any. We ask people to limit their comments to more, no more than five minutes. And I have several people who have asked to speak tonight. We'll start with UW Platteville's update from the student body president, Ben.
Ben Belke, Galena, Illinois. So for those of you who don't know me, I am the student body president of the University of Wisconsin Platteville. I'm from Galena, Illinois. And this is kind of one way to kind of let people know what's going on at the university because I feel like there's not, not a lot of people know what's happening there. So kind of the first thing on the list, it's kind of a short list this time since it is the summer. But August 9th is the last NSR date, so new student registration. And then pretty much right after that, August 13th is when RAs and other groups start moving in. So you'll start to see students slowly starting to move back then. And then obviously, the first move-in date isn't until August 31st. So that's when new students start coming here. And then my last thing is, one thing that we're going to start to do for our Facebook page is we're going to start to do historical photos, like probably once a week or twice a week or something like that. So one thing that we're looking for are historical photos. We've already started looking in the archives, the university's archives. But if you guys have any old photos of either the town or the university in general, you can either send those to me. I have my information if you want to stop me and get it. Or just kind of send it to our Facebook page or send it to my Facebook page. That's kind of what our idea is for this coming year. That's all. Any questions?
Thanks, Ben. Next, we have Deborah Browning, who wants to talk about the senior citizen center picnic. That's hard to say, Deb. Center, citizen center. Picnic, picnic. The picnic's easy.
Hi, I'm Deb Browning, 375 South Chestnut Street. And I'm a member of the Commission on Aging. And we are pleased that we have Barbara now that comes to our meetings and she made a wonderful suggestion that we should come, members of the committee, and talk to you about some of the exciting things that we're doing at the senior center. We have a calendar for you, which I did make a few copies until my copier died today. So I do have some of them. Like for example, I don't know if you're aware, that we have a book of the month club that people can participate. And we also have speakers every Thursday that people might be interested in. And of course, if you like to play cards, we do have Uker. We also have Bridge, if people do like that. But why I'm here today is because on August 21st, we have the senior picnic, which is a family picnic. Seniors over 60 are free. And, but because it's a family affair, we would like very much to invite those seniors' grandchildren or family members. And for just a donation, they can come and join us. Afterwards, we're going to have bingo. And we have some wonderful prizes that the community has donated to us. So it's going to be at the Community Evangelical Free Church, 300 Pioneer Road East here in Platteville. We also would like to thank very much those people that have donated, like the Country Kitchen has donated food for us. So there will be plenty to eat. And the Dairy Queen has also donated the Dilly Bars, which we all love. So that's going to be wonderful. We also have transportation. So if people do need transportation, please feel free to call the center and we can arrange that for you. And of course, we obviously have music from the Wadu's. So it starts at 4 o'clock. So we would like very much for people to put that on your calendar. Please save it. We had over 200 people last year. We hope to break that record this year. So that's something that you may enjoy. Last but not least, I would like to inform you that we also have a wonderful program that's coming to the center. It's on July 31st. And it's regarding hearing loss. And it's put on by the Hearing Loss Association of America. And if you're interested, it's from 11:00 AM to, excuse me, 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM at the center. So we would like very much for you to enjoy to come do that. If you'd like to join the book club, if you'd like to play some cards, whatever you like, the center is open for the public. So I want to thank you. Yes, I'm sorry.
What time are the Thursday speakers?
The Thursday meetings are, the speakers? Okay, the speakers are 10:30. We also have, each week, there is a different speaker that's coming. We also have, the pharmacist is going to come and talk about your medications. And that's going to be on the 19th, Monday of August, 19th, at 10:45. So if you're interested or someone's interested about your medications, we do have a pharmacist from the Southwest Health Center that's going to be coming in and talking to people. All right?
Give me one more time the date of the picnic.
I apologize. I think I did mention it, but I'll mention it again. It's at 4 o'clock. The door is open. All right, we'll start serving at 4:30 to 5:30. And at 5:30, hopefully we'll have everybody through the lines and we're going to start bingo around 5:30, 6 o'clock. Okay, any other questions?
Three things, Deb.
Yes.
First of all, Barb Stockhausen, thank you for encouraging someone from the Commission on Aging to come. Second of all, thanks for all the information. And third, if you have extra calendars and you don't have enough for everybody, I'm sure that Candace would be more than happy to make them and put them in our mailboxes.
All right. Also, I don't know if you're aware of, but we have a newsletter that comes out. We also have a website. And the newsletters are located, and I've got two pages of them. There's 800 copies that are spread throughout the community. Anywhere from Walmart to the Country Kitchen to a variety of places. So I made a copy of that and I will give you a list of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, the third person who wanted, the third people persons who wanted to speak tonight were Bill Kloster and Deb Rice. Unfortunately, they had something come up at the last minute, but they did ask, that I read into the record, that they were planning to come tonight to talk about the need for additional firefighting facilities, a community fire station. I believe, Candace, do you know if everybody, everybody on the council got a letter from both Bill and from Deb? And so please make note of that and know that if they could have been here, they would have been here, but they couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments under this? That's all the people that I have who have asked to speak, who are speaking about something that's not on the agenda. So that means we can now proceed to reports. Boards, commissions, and committee minutes. Community Development Board, Stockhausen, anything to add?
No, nothing to add.
How about Airport Commission, me, the pancake breakfast was wonderful. Commission on Aging, Barb?
Nothing to add because we've already heard everything.
Thank you, it was very good. The Housing Authority?
No addition.
The Museum Board, Barb, you've been busy.
Maybe next time.
Okay. And Community Safe Routes. Nothing to add. Okay. Then we're on to the action items on our agenda. And the first of those action items is the land sale, Lot 46 in the Industry Park. And Joe, I think you're the person here.
I will get that started. Excuse me. Yes, the Pedic and city staff have been working on trying to sell land in the Industry Park. We do have a prospect interested in purchasing Lot 46, which is in the newest part of the Industry Park. It's on the corner of Vision Drive and Phillips Road. The purchaser would be Faly Properties LLC. They would purchase the property and construct a 10,000 square foot building for use by IWI Motorparts, bumper-to-bumper, which is, they're both basically family enterprises. The building would have an estimated value of $600,000. The business will initially employ four people at that location. So basically, they're a distributor of parts to garages, dealerships, and so forth, not necessarily a retail location. The proposed use does meet the city's zoning requirements. And so we are anxious to get them in there. I know they're anxious to get in there. They would like to get started, if possible, construction this fall. So we're ready to go. Pedic has reviewed this request as well. They have recommended approval. I didn't add it to the summary sheet or the report, but they recommended approval subject to a development agreement and the covenants which have been in place for that property. So with that addition, staff would make recommendation to approve the sale of Lot 46 Industry Park, subject to a development agreement and the covenant. Any questions?
Any questions of Joe? Otherwise, Tim and Mike Faly are in our audience tonight. And if nothing else, guys, wave. And if anybody would like, I mean, you're welcome to come to the podium and get on the camera. I mean, we do a web.
You did a wonderful job.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like the prospective buyer to answer? Or any questions of, I see Ela in the audience. She's our Pedic Executive Director. Anybody with questions?
I have a question. I'm trying to get an idea of the width, the scope, the area of distribution for this facility. Are you going to serve three states, many states, whatever?
Why don't one of you come to the podium and talk a little bit about your business? You have to come to the podium because we have to have you on microphone.
And another question is, will you be serving some of the local suppliers? You're not a direct supplier to the public.
Tim Faly, 4960 Hingeview Drive, Dubuque, Iowa. Retail is not our primary business. And out of this location, we'd probably be going 15 or 20 miles.
Radius.
Radius, yes.
And you have stores in, you have other stores?
Yes.
Iowa?
Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin, besides this one in Platteville.
So that's probably what IWI means.
Correct.
Iowa, Illinois.
Iowa, Wisconsin, Illinois.
Iowa, Wisconsin, Illinois. Any other questions of Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all? Do I hear any motions?
I move to approve the sale of Lot 46 in Industry Park 7, following the land price formula to Faly Properties LLC for use as an auto parts distribution building operated by IWI Motorparts.
Subject to?
Second.
Subject to the developer's agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Candace, make sure and add, subject to the developer's agreement. Okay. We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And welcome to our community, IWI. Okay, next item on the agenda is Legion Park Event Center funding. Karen's not here, so Luke?
I'll do my best takeover for Karen. So last week, two weeks, she presented to you a request from the Legion Park Event Center Committee for an additional $100,000 of city funding to be used for the Legion Park Event Center. As I'm sure everyone is aware, the Legion Park Event Center is a building that would replace the existing art hall and warming house up in Legion Park. The building would be approximately 600, 6,000 square feet of new event space in town and something that obviously the public has recognized as a large need for us, since the Legion Park Event Center in a relatively short period of time has raised just over $735,000. The new request, staff is recommending the money would come from park impact fees of, in the amount of $50,000, with the remaining $50,000 coming from the Orlo Clayton Trust Fund. These funds are very restrictive in their uses and, but this project would meet either of those trusts restrictions. So essentially, there's no tax levy being, you know, requested for this project, for this addition. Sherry Engelke is in the audience. If you have any specific questions, she is the president of the Legion Park Event Center Committee.
Okay, questions? Do I hear a motion?
The new number is 1,011,000 versus 831,000?
The total project cost of everything were added to it. And there are some, there are some priorities that get added as more money gets raised is 1,011,000.
So part of the reason for the request is 792,000 is for the, essentially for the base building. So with the amount we have raised, we would exceed that amount and be able to commit to some contracts that would allow us to actually make sure the building gets built on time by committing to those contracts now. And as we presented at the last meeting, if for some reason we exceed, or our fundraising will continue, and if we exceed the $1 million amount, any amount in addition to that would be refunded from this city request.
You have a time on that because you would continue to pool funds for future maintenance of the building and improvements. So at what point do you decide you didn't raise past that amount and you're saving it for future stuff?
So I actually might have a hard time answering that. So you're asking what, a deadline for fundraising? So essentially, where the fundraising for, say, this, the phase of the base building plus those additional items ends? And when new fundraising would start for additional items such as maintenance or something else? I don't have a direct deadline date. Sherry, do you, can you help me there if there is a deadline? I know building construction is planning to start after Dairy Days, but I would assume we'll continue to try to fundraise for those amounts, you know, for, you know, until resources start to dry up, I guess I would say.
Sherry, you have to come.
Sherry Engelke, 4397, County D, Platteville. I'm the chairman of the fundraisers, or the event center. We would fundraise, I think, until it's built or, you know, like you said, they're dried up. We already have $27,000 of extra money committed for future use from the Dairy Day Committee, $3,000 a year to help with future maintenance. We're not putting that in our cost of building the building. So that's going to be available to the city. And we're hoping that with the kitchen and the things they do, it basically maintains itself because we're trying to make it as maintenance-free as possible.
I just, I see like this middle gray area of trying to decide whether you're fundraising for something new or any funds brought in still would be under that obligation of needing to pay back to the city, so.
Well, I think we would fundraise until we got to the 1,011. Do you know what I'm saying? Or the building was built because at some point, we're going to have to say, okay, we can't put the chairs and tables in there or whatever. It'll have to use old stuff. I mean, I don't know, we can say, okay, this day we're going to stop. We do have it, we can sign, if you approve it tonight, we plan to sign contracts this week. And we plan for construction to start the day after Dairy Day with groundbreaking 12 noon on Dairy Day.
Sunday.
I think I want to clarify my thought that I'm not saying, I would hope that you'd continue to fundraise as much as you had steam, right? And until it's built. And that future efforts would continue to support the building and people would still be motivated to fundraise. But I'm just wondering when you let yourself off the hook for this paying back towards the park impact fees or not? And if there's a time that you just know we didn't reach, do you understand? I feel like you're thinking about this, Luke.
Yeah, I do. So my personal goal would to have the 1,011, 11, 1,011 fundraised and not touch the city's money. But, you know, I mean, I think at that point, if we have the building up and we're missing tables and chairs and we don't do the stone front, we maybe need to come back to the city, say, okay, do you want to put your 100,000 in and finish it out with this as our initial plan? I mean, at some point, we can let the city make that decision whether they want to put their money into that part of it or not. I mean, this 100,000 will enable us to sign the contracts and put the building up for sure. And it will be, I think, the next thing on our wish list is the epoxy floor. And we would be partway into that with this 100,000 used.
And so in support of Sherry, I would say that fundraising continues. There continue to be fundraising meetings and in fact, grant writing continues. And so I guess until everybody has, everybody that's working on the fundraising committee exhausts their list of people, this will continue.
Right. I mean, we're meeting tomorrow morning with two more grants that we found out that Angie's going to write for us to continue to do. I mean, just because you give us the 100,000, we're not going to say, okay, we're at this point, we're going to quit. That's, I think that enables us to sign the contracts. Otherwise, it might not get built till next spring if we have to. Because it slowed down. We made it to 700 and then it's been a tighter.
Yep. No, I think I understand. You're just asking us to free up the money. So if you need it, you can use it, but you're hoping not to use it.
Right. We don't even have it in our budget as being part of what we earn. When we tell you the 700, that's not including only the 50 from the city from the initial that was given to us.
The only thing I would say is with that said, at this point, I would, I would consider that you are committing that money and being prepared to commit that money to, towards this project. You know, we're dealing with volunteers groups that have graciously given a ton of time in fundraising, you know, so it's hard, and that's why the question's hard. It's hard for me to say absolutely, we have to mandate that all these volunteers continue to work. You know, I can't, we can't do that. I don't see anyone dropping out at any point, but at the same time, there is going to become a point where I can't tell you an exact date where.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's a fair question. It's a very difficult question to answer.
Is there a point where you go, team, we're done fundraising, let's use that money and be done? let's use that money and be done? I mean, there's a point that that will come, but just wondering if you have thought of it, so, okay. Good luck with fundraising. Thank you for all that you've done.
I have one question. Who is going to be responsible to opening the doors and closing the doors when events take place?
I can probably handle that. So one of the, the extra items we're actually considering would be a system that would work very similarly to the lock system at PD or the lock system at City Hall, where we can open up those inside doors, so not the, the outside doors that get you into the restrooms. Those can be, you know, left open during daytime hours, but those in, inner doors could actually be opened, you know, via park system, by, by a computer system, by our department. So essentially, it'll be Parks and Rec that will control the access to that building once it's built.
And then there's somebody that will look around and make sure everything's as it should be?
Just like we do with any of our shelters. Obviously, this building is more complex than, than our existing shelters, but we already have a deposit system established where we take a deposit and make sure, you know, the shelters are returned to the condition that they were in when we, when they were rented, before that deposit is returned.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear any action?
I make a motion to approve the fifty thousand dollars from the park impact fees, and fifty thousand from the Orlo Clayton Trust account to the Legion Park Event Center, with the understanding that if fundraising, excuse me, if fundraising exceeds the one million eleven thousand dollars, the amount requested will be reduced proportionally and credited first to the park impact fee account.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Robin, to approve this one hundred thousand dollar request. And then with the caveats about how if fundraising exceeds a million eleven, it's reduced, we'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, the next item, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Development Agreement Amendment and Penalty Fee Waiver. Joe?
Yes, so back in two thousand thirteen, after a, a very lengthy legal process, the city obtained multiple residential properties that were in violation of numerous city codes. So the city then did a request for proposal process to find other people to purchase those properties and redevelop them, fix them up, tear them down, build something new, but basically improve the properties that we had obtained. So when we, we sold those properties to different entities, different people, subject to a development agreement that had conditions regarding what they were going to do to the properties and when they were going to have that completed. Several of those properties, actually five, were acquired by River to Valley Initiatives. And three of those properties right now have, they're all for sale, but three of them have a buyer interested in, on taking those properties on. They're all three currently vacant. River to Valley, at this point, is basically trying to get out from underneath all of these properties and get them to somebody else that would take them over. But Dressler Properties LLC is interested in acquiring the properties at five sixty-five West Cedar Street, four twenty Southwest Road, and four forty Southwest Road. As I mentioned, these three properties are all vacant. The Dressler would also like to construct basically the same type of buildings that were proposed by River to Valley Initiatives, a single-family home on five sixty-five Cedar Street, and then a triplex on the combined four twenty and four forty Southwest Road. But there is an issue with that from their standpoint, because there's some specific language in the development agreement that really doesn't apply to their case. First of all, the, the deadline that, for reconstruction that was provided in the development agreement has already passed, so they don't want to be subject to that date, because obviously, they can't meet it. So they'd like to have that amended. And then River to Valley had initially proposed their structures would be owner-occupied, that they would construct them and then try to sell them, including the, the triplex. They were going to do some, basically a condo arrangement. Dressler does not want to try to do an owner-occupied situation. They want to construct new buildings, but they would be for rental purposes. So they'd like to have that addressed in the development agreement to make, get rid of that discrepancy. Also, the anticipated value of the properties after they were constructed would be a little different than what River to Valley had proposed. So basically, to allow the sale of those properties to go forward, River to Valley would like to have that, a new agreement in place for their situation that they know is, what they're going to be subject to before they purchase it.
I mean Dressler would.
Dressler, excuse me. Yes. River to Valley, at this point, as I mentioned, they just want to get out from underneath the property, so Dressler would be taking over. So that would be something that they would like to have done before the sale of the properties occurs. So I did have, the city attorney did have some issues. I was hoping to get it to you before this evening, but their offices actually were subject to the power outage in Madison from the transformer or substation that had a fire. So I did get it from them just recently, so I put the copies on your desk this evening. But I did kind of summarize what the, the differences in the construction would be and so forth in the staff note. So hopefully, you've got a, a good feel for what the, the differences would be. But the, the new agreement that they wrote is basically based on the, the agreements that we had in place back when we did the request proposals previously. And I did want to mention, just so, if people were curious about Dressler Properties, if you're not familiar with them, they did acquire two properties at the same time, back in two thousand thirteen, one eighty-five Center Street and four thirty South Jesson Street. And those have been successfully redeveloped according to the terms of the agreement. So the other issue, again, regarding the sale is because of the, the fact that River to Valley has not completed the construction that they said they were going to complete by the deadline required. The development agreement had some penalties, penalty clause built into it. So basically, when they, they set the value, they said, we're going to build it, and it's going to have this value. And then the taxes would be based on this amount. The agreement says if they didn't meet the construction deadline, that they would have to make a penalty payment. That's the difference from what the taxes would have come off that property to what they actually were. So that penalty was due after the deadline every year until they achieved compliance. So there's several years of penalties that have built up on those properties to date. At this point, so their main finance entity on the redevelopment is Forward Community Investments. They are trying to, as well, get out from underneath the mess that was dumped on their lap. So they're trying to expedite the sale of these vacant properties. And they've come to the situation where the property in particular at five sixty-five Cedar Street, the sale price of that property, the, the revenue coming in from that is not adequate to cover all the liens and encoverances that are against the property. So they're making some concessions on some of their other properties, so, so they don't have as much of a loss, I guess, I would say. They're asking the city to consider waiving the non-performance penalty on the Cedar Street property, which comes in at six thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. So that would help bring it into alignment with the actual sale price that's coming from that property. So that would take a council approval, because that is a condition of the development agreement. So basically, there's two items that council's being asked to consider, the waiving the performance penalties so that property can be sold, and then the new development agreements with Dressler Properties to cover the new construction. Any questions?
So let me get this straight. The waiver of, the penalty fee waiver is only on one property, five sixty-five West Cedar Street? And there would still be penalty fees on the four twenty, four forty Southwest Road property?
Right. They, as of today, they have not submitted a request for waiving those penalties on the Southwest.
All right. So you're asking us to consider a penalty fee waiver on one property, five sixty-five West Cedar? You're asking us to consider two new development agreements, one for five sixty-five West Cedar, and one for four twenty, four forty Southwest Road?
Correct.
So there's actually three different proposed actions in this one item. Am I correct?
Yes, I guess if you're considering the two development agreements separately. I mean, there, there's actually, there are three parcels, but.
Well, there are two development agreements.
They're treating the, the two Southwest Road properties together, but.
I understand, but there's.
They're separated.
There are separate development agreements for each of the. And then there's a performance fee waiver request for one of these two developer agreement properties.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I just wanted everybody to understand that it's actually three items, two development agreements, and one penalty fee waiver for five sixty-five Cedar Street. So, other questions? That, I just was clarifying. Questions?
Got a couple here. So the property on Southwest Road, which is four twenty, I believe, four forty, Southwest Road, currently is still two individual parcels. And the, the previous agreement said that there would be a CSM done, which I don't believe ever was done.
No, they started the process. It actually went to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission approved consolidating those parcels.
I think you have to say what your initials are for.
So that was for.
Certified survey man.
Yeah, certified survey man.
So they, they got the city approval to combine them, but they still have to hire a.
Sure.
A surveyor to actually.
That was for the original developer's agreement. Now, the new one, which would be done by Dresslers, so basically, we'd be doing the same thing, but for a different, excuse me, different purpose, because the previous one would be for a condominium-type situation. And this is going to be a triplex. So my question is, has the new one been sent to the Planning Commission? Because it is a change of the original purpose and use.
Yeah, well, to be totally honest, when, when the Plan Commission reviewed the first one, they didn't present it. River to Valley didn't present it as condominium situation. They just presented it as a combination, combining the two lots. So I don't know. I, I don't know what, what they had in mind, how they were going to.
Let's look at it as a new project.
How they were going to get to the owner-occupied part of that.
Okay, so as a new project with a new developer, and probably a different set of plans, different set of style of building, has that been drawn, taken to the Planning Commission for approval?
The Plan Commission doesn't have to approve the buildings. They just had to approve the consolidation of lots. So they, they wouldn't have to approve it again, but they would have to have the document drawn up and recorded, which, as of today, has not been completed. So legally, it's still two parcels.
And also for the penalties, so the penalties of a sixty-one twenty-four eighty-four don't include also the unpaid mowing fee of a hundred and forty-two dollars for each parcel, or two eighty-four. And they also don't include a water bill, which has for Southwest Road and Cedar Street as well. So how do we, how does the city make sure? Because once you, they sell this property, if you do, we do do this removal, to make sure that the city collects that money?
Yeah, so the, at this point, the Southwest, any fees on the Southwest properties have not been requested to be, to be waived. So it'd just be the Cedar Street property. If that is not paid, Barb can correct me if I'm wrong, but if that's not paid, it, or, it would be placed as a lien on the property. And then the county could take enforcement if it's not paid.
County could take enforcement on our water bill?
I'm Barb Johnson, the Financial Operations Manager. And if someone doesn't pay their August thirty-first outstanding water bills, it can be placed on the tax roll. And then there's a ten percent penalty added to that. And then it just gets added on to their current year taxes.
Working on a change of ownership here. So it still would apply?
They would still have to pay that. Otherwise, it will go on the tax roll, and they would have to pay it.
Other questions on these? Or comments? I obviously haven't had time to read the developer agreements since they're on my desk tonight.
This five sixty-five West Cedar, on page two of your write-up here, came to us. It's proposed as a ranch or two-story, single-family structure. Is that still true?
I, I think, if, if you're familiar with the, the properties that they did construct, the one eighty-five Center Street in particular has a, a building on it. I think he's going to try to use that exact same floor plan. So it's a, a two-story, kind of an L-shaped structure with the front porch. If it fits on the property, that's what he would like to construct.
I gather that's why you mentioned one eighty-five Center Street in that proposed construction. That's done, you said. One eighty-five Center is done.
Yes.
I didn't get a chance around, look at that.
Is that the, that's the building on the corner across from Washington Street Apartments?
Yes. Five sixty-five Cedar's actually a very narrow lot. It's a substandard lot, so he, he's not certain at this point he can get that to fit, but that's what he's proposing to construct.
And this is, I think, oh, I don't know if this is.
Well, I would hope that these proposed developments fit on the lot. My comment about Division Street is that one structure was built, and I believe, in my opinion, it's built too large. And that structure's been standing for sale for quite some time. It's, in my opinion, too large for the lot.
Have any precedent of waiving or not waiving fees? Does this issue?
All, all the other properties that were sold through this process with the development agreement, all the ones except River to Valleys have been completed within the deadline. So we, we haven't had this issue come up until now.
Well, my comment is, is we should waive this fee. Otherwise, it comes back to us, and we would have to spend quite a bit of money on legal fees. And then as far as the water and sewer, I think that should be processed through this other lien organization. And do, that technically is not in our realm, because you'll add a lien to the tax bills. And when the closing takes place, they'll finance the taxes in the process of closing that sale. But I'm, I'm feeling, I know it's difficult, six thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-four cents, to, to waive that, but there's so much more money involved in the future if we don't. Perspective with.
Other questions, comments? I guess I'm, I'm concerned about, personally, I'm concerned about the decrease, the, the way the new developer is talking about a decrease in fair market value. It makes me believe that the product won't be what we had expected it to be. When I read, and I understand River to Valley is not building this, but when you read about the, the triplex that was going to be at four twenty, four forty Southwest Road, with an exposed basement, the two and a half baths, an open floor plan, thirty-year architectural shingles, et cetera, et cetera. And now, I basically get the project will consist of a bill, of building a new structure containing three dwelling units, each unit containing either two or three bedrooms per unit. No mention of anything else, and we go from an estimated fair market value. And part of this was to build tax base in the, in the city from four hundred and fifty down to three hundred and seventy-five. And the single-family dwelling going from an estimated fair market value of a hundred and sixty-five down to a hundred and twenty-five. I mean, I'm sorry, but to me, it sounds like... I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the waiving of the six thousand dollar fee. That's not money that we had developed as a budget item. So while it's, it wouldn't be paid, it's not like it was money that we were expecting and would have lost. But I, I'm more concerned about what these structures would look like. And in this writing, there's nothing about, in the triplex, there's nothing about parking, and if it's two or three. I mean, and you say that doesn't have to come back to Plan Commission. So, so where are the standards? What, what are the standards?
Standards would be our zoning ordinance, is what they would have to meet.
Which aren't enumerated here. And which I don't know if the developer knows. It's like building this, suggesting this house on this small lot and not even, you know, I feel like next time we're gonna have, uh, another request to waive, waive our zoning requirements so I can put this house on the lot.
The issue that I have would be the waiving of the development agreement penalties. This was an agreement that was done between the current owner and the city. And there was a reason that it was there is for the fact that we wouldn't be getting the taxes. So, in a sense, we have lost money on it already and we'd lose money if we don't agree to the, or if we do agree to this. So, this is something I believe is between the property owner and their lender and not the city's responsibility to give up. I've read through the, the lady's letter that she sent to the city about through some active sales efforts. So, I've watched these properties since this has gone on. And the only place that this property was marketed for sale was on this company's website. And no time has it been on the MLS system through Realtor, an agency, or on, we'll even say Zillow. So, um, again, I think this is money that is owed to the city, one way or another. Between whether it was in taxes and being that it hasn't done, it's been through the penalties. So, we just on our last issue here, when I seconded, decided to help fund about a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars towards a project. And we can't just keep giving money out without taking money in, especially on something that was agreed upon. And as Joe has said, have, they have yet to ask for a waiver of the Southwest Road property, which I'm, as a betting man, would assume that would probably be next.
Do you know what the fees are, what the penalty is on the Southwest Road property?
So, as of today's date, between the, the penalties, the mowing fees, the water bills, um, this River Valley initiative is owes the city $22,238.92.
On these two properties?
Yep. And I find that to be a quite large sum of money.
So, where'd you get your figure, Isaac? Besides a $6,000 figure?
All right, the $15,731.26 is the developers' agreement for the Southwest Road property. Got that from Joe. Um, they've got unpaid mowing fees of each property at a hundred forty-two dollars apiece, came from the city. And they've got a water bill, which essentially is for fire protection, um, of 6304 on the Southwest Road and the Cedar Street is 3578. You guys don't have that, I did that on my own just here this afternoon, so.
Well, I, I'll tell you right now, I was not in agreement to sell to this company. And I made that real clear when we made all those agreements. And it was approved anyway. Because I know this company is not forthcoming when they make agreements. And, um, there were two of us on the council at that time that were not in agreement with selling to this company. And this is evident. This is one of those situations that it's evident, as I knew at the time, would happen.
And I think by doing this, you're also setting precedent for the next person that comes in with the developers' agreement. And all of a sudden, forgo as you decide not to follow through with it or do some changes and all of a sudden, well, you've done it for this group, now we'd like ours erased, or our dead erased. Yeah, I think it was an agreement and I think it's owed to the city.
Kind of pointless to put the penalties in the next agreement if we don't charge the penalties at this point. I, I, the only other thought I guess I'd add to what's been said is, would we have to do 100% or 0% of the fee? And do we want to agree on some percentage of the fee?
I also think that development agreement just finally got here to this afternoon, which nobody's had a chance to read through. I agree with Barb Doss on the fact that what is gonna be built is unknown at this time. Um, I think this should be tabled, and I'm not making a motion at time, but I think this should be tabled till everybody has a chance to read through and research this some more time.
Have you made a motion?
Oh, we didn't get to that point, I was just saying that.
So, we want to move to table it until our next meeting? Do we need to put a date? Is that the advice always when we table it? Not put that as a motion.
Did you make a motion, Robin?
Yes.
She made a motion to table, Ken ma- Ken seconded. And this would be tabled until the first meeting in August, which is-
August 13th.
Right. And with the express, uh, uh, that no one's had time to read the development agreements and, uh, that we would request, uh, perhaps, uh, some clarification from, uh, the proposed developer as to what is intended to be built. Okay, we'll vote to table, this is a vote to table a motion as made by Robin and seconded by Ken.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Joe, if you, if you have additional questions about the kind of information, otherwise, everybody has the development agreements now. And, uh, if you could get clarification on the type of structures, bathrooms, et cetera, that are going to be built, that would be good. And then complete inform, and, and at this point, it's a fee waiver only for one of the properties.
So, that's been requested, correct?
And also information, of course, on size of lot. What's being built on the lot for the size?
And how that forms or doesn't conform to the current ordinances in place. Okay, we'll go on to the next action item. This is Alder Person resignation and filling correspond- corresponding vacancy. Nichols, did, Nichols, are you prepared to do this or am I supposed to do it?
I can, we can tag team perhaps.
Okay.
Be the best way to handle it. Um, so, at large, Alder Person Cena Sharp resigned her position effective July 11th. Her term expires April of 2021. And the council has three options regarding, uh, the vacancy. The council can choose to leave the position vacant until the term expires in April of 2021. Or the council could choose to appoint a successor for the remainder of the term. Or the council could choose to order a special election. According to state statute, the common council may order a special election to fill a vacancy, but the special election would not occur until November the 5th, 2019. Um, and the individual elected under those circumstances would only serve the remainder of the term. Uh, the council president and president pro temp do recommend that option two be pursued, um, and, uh, pres- propose the process that's outlined in the staff note. Um, this process is similar to the one that was used, uh, to fill a midterm vacancy in the spring of 2018. Um, and so that process would be that, uh, uh, if the council chose to appoint a successor for the remainder of the term, uh, the vacancy would be publicized and a press release would be issued, um, this week. And ca- candidates would be asked to submit a one-page letter of interest. Um, then, uh, a due date for those letters would be August the 26th. Uh, then September 3rd, interviews would be conducted with the common council. Um, and the candidates would be invited to make a five-minute presentation, uh, followed by questions from the council. Um, and then at the September 10th meeting, a nomination for appointment would be made and voted on by the common council with, uh, new council member orientation on September 24th. So, of course, if the president or pro temp would like to add anything to the staff note?
I guess that we, uh, I feel it's, that, um, this process has worked well. And, uh, I do know that there would be additional expense in holding a special elec- election in November. Plus, that's pretty far down the way. And I do believe we should fill it because it is like a year and a half, almost two, until the position would be up for election. Anybody with any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the process outlined on number two, option number two, to appoint a successor to the seat vacated by Alder Person Cena Sharp.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen, second by Barb, to adopt this process, which, uh, this week will, uh, publicly announce and, uh, ask for letters of interest that address qualifications, what you like about Plattville, areas or improvements you would focus on if elected, if appointed, and characteristics you believe are important to be an effective member of the coun- common council. Those letters of interest will be due the 26th of August. Please, as a council member, mark your calendar for September 3rd. That would be the date of the interviews that we would have with candidates. Uh, our meeting on September 10th would be the time a nomination would be made and appointment. Candace, would, would, the swearing-in wouldn't be that day, would it? I don't know how that works. E?
Um, I believe it would be at their first meeting, similar to what we do.
Okay. So, then it would probably be September 24th when the new council member is seated and also his orientation. So, we'll vote?
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll move on to selection of a search firm for the position of city manager. Eileen or Robin? Do you wanna talk about the process?
Eileen.
Good job.
Yes. Klein, Doss, and Nichols, um, met along with the city manager and did a telephone interview of three different firms that had, uh, contacted the city about interest in, uh, serving for, uh, an executive search to replace Karen Kurt. So, it was Public Administration Associates, the Novak Group, and Gov HR. Um, we asked the same questions of each one of the entities, we, uh, listened to their answers, um, considered the, um, individuals in their firm that would be available to work with us closely. And after the telephone conferences, uh, the three council members sat down and discussed our views of each group and the consensus. The, actually, um, all of us agreed that the firm that we felt would most, uh, suit our needs is Public Administration Associates. And some of you may recognize that name because we have used them in the past for other city manager searches and have been well pleased with them. So, the, uh, the committee, Doss, Nichols, and Klein, would recommend approval of hiring the Public Administration Associates firm for the executive search.
So, is that a motion?
Uh, that would be a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'd second it.
Okay, Isaac, uh, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have questions? Then we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Uh, Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would remind every council member that you need to be thinking about your 10-second video and telling us where you're going to do that. I have to comment. It's very difficult to do 10 seconds. 15 seconds, I could do it, but- Maybe we'll do 15 then. You might wanna consider, I can do 10 to 12, but you get- 10 was pretty short, so you can go up to- I tried. You can go up to 15. Okay. All right. Uh, information and discussion items, we'll start with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Luke?
Yes, so it's my pleasure to present to you the, uh, 2019 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Uh, this process, uh, for the Parks and Recreation, Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee, uh, started in 2011 with a public input meeting, um, followed by a, uh, survey that was conducted. Um, using those results, the, uh, Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee, um, helped to, uh, draft this plan. I'd like to especially thank, um, Debbie Sigworth and Catherine Wesby, who did a great deal of work, um, making this plan look a lot nicer than our previous plans. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to flip through our old plans, but they were very, very drab and kind of boring, very hard to digest. Uh, the new plan has lots of graphs, pictures, and things that, uh, make it, uh, much more, uh, digestible, I think, to the, to the general public and easier to read. In fact, some of our committee members, after seeing it the first time, kind of took a sigh of relief, um, when they saw it was, I don't even know how many pages it ended up, but a, a number of pages, 50-plus pages, um, with how quickly they were able to actually get through the information and find what they were looking for. Um, within the plan, um, probably the highlights are that we have, uh, five goals, um, and, uh, 63 initiatives. Um, so we kind of talk about where are, we are in our park system and where we'd like to be, and then developed 63 initiatives that help us get to that point. Um, I would direct your attention specifically, um, I think a lot of the meat of this is summarized in page 33 and 34 of the plan, um, where we talk about the implementation and the park priorities. Um, so, once the initiatives were established, the, uh, committee and myself kind of, uh, put a priority on them, uh, either high, medium, or low. Um, with, uh, we, we did assign dollar amounts, although I would say that when we do capital requests for items, um, those numbers are usually typically a little bit better than, than these numbers. So, these are just a rough guess of where we think some of these items would, would come in. Um, and, uh, essentially assigned each of those initiatives either a, a high, medium, or low, like I said. Um, the total dollar amount for the initiatives that we came up with was just under $2 million. Um, I would also note, though, that, um, we do have a good history of not, uh, requesting everything through tax funding, that we do a lot of fundraising, uh, grant writing and things like that on our own. Um, I, I would also point out that one of the larger items on there is the Allegiant Park Event Center, um, which has obviously, um, been fairly successfully funded at this point. So, when you're able to subtract, and of course, our dollar amount there is much lower because when this plan was approved, um, this building has gotten better and better. But, uh, that amount could essentially be subtracted from that total amount. Um, with this plan, though, I would note that we're, this is not, uh, a set in stone. You're not approving anything set in stone, you're just setting a general direction for us. Um, we certainly are adaptable. Um, I like to say I, I kind of, we kind of toss out ideas or people come to us with ideas. Um, we run, you know, smaller committees and see which ones of those ideas take off. Um, so Allegiant Park Event Center is a, a great example of one of those ideas. Was it necessarily the highest priority at that point? You know, it might not have been voted by the committee as that, but when you have the backing of a community that says, "We really wanna do this," and it takes off, that kind of can jump where things are in the priority list. Um, I'd also point out in here, we do talk about a number of our partnerships we have within the community. Um, we have, uh, the Recreation Parks Department have a lot of great partnerships. Um, we have a lot of youth organizations that, uh, provide similar types of programming. Uh, we both work with them and we also, uh, um, try not to duplicate their efforts because we wanna ultimately provide, you know, the most needed services through, you know, our, our, our city programming, um, without providing that duplication. So, we try not to duplicate things even, you know, within our departments where the library and the, you know, senior center and the, um, museum, we meet regularly to make sure we're not duplicating our own efforts as well. Um, so I, I would also point out that we do discuss that in this plan.
Okay. Questions, comments? Well, my comment is, Swiss Valley Park, I had no idea that's the name of the dog park. But the other thing is, if you look at the picture, it's my husband in the, in the red shirt and it's my dog drinking water. So, we have shown an interest. And he's picking up poop, by the way. Thought I'd throw that in there.
We appreciate those that do that.
The Mount View Campground for the expansion of the campground, approximately how many sites would that include?
We can, we can go up to, uh, 15 sites with our current restroom facility. Um, so that's what we are recom- well, I, I actually believe we have room, we're, we're thinking it's, we're gonna try for 15. I think it's more likely we'd end up with 14 total sites, uh, by expanding to that north side, just simply, camping is turning into bringing your house with you now. Um, so it, that, when the campground was originally designed, it wasn't that way. Uh, and that's also why we have a demand for improving the electrical and water hookups that are there um, because we see much fewer tent campers at this point. And, um, a- as noted, people bring their large RVs.
How many are there right now?
There are eight current sites at Mount View.
So, it would basically almost double it.
Correct. Yep. And like I said, the reason for that is the, the existing rest- the state has specific regulations on how many sites you can have per number of restrooms we have. So, without adding additional restroom facilities, that would, that's where our cap would be. And that's a nice example of where there would also be a payoff, though, because we do collect a significant amount of revenue from, uh, the campground. Um, especially, this year has been even more, um, the most revenue we've, we've ever had. It's just been continually up and I attribute that both a, a little bit to- It's been continually up and I attribute that both a little bit to the ATV and a lot to flooding along the Mississippi.
Okay. And these numbers along this chart on pages 33 and 34, the numbers are insignificant, right? That's not, are the numbers, like is number 61 property acquisition, O.E. Gray, your 61st priority or just does it happen to exist on the 61st line?
It just happens to exist on the 64th line.
Yeah.
Our previous plan had a lot of detail where it talked about different classification for parks. We tried to keep that in here to some extent. So these parks are ordered by their classification type and then just within them, it's just a random spattering. It's actually the same, the same Excel spreadsheet that the committee used to vote on their priorities for these parks on. But the priority would simply be noted based on the high, medium, or low in which classification the committee voted for each particular initiative.
I would also add for the folks who have not had a chance to read this, is this online? Luke?
This example, I don't believe is on our website. I can throw it, well, it certainly would be now since it's in the packets. I think it should, though, I think that's a good point, that it should probably be highlighted through one of our, I don't remember what it's called, our news release items. So it'd be brought to the front page of our website. We can certainly write something up and put that on there so folks can have a chance to view it.
Yeah. The thing I like about it is that you've done a history of each of the parks. And so people who are curious about some history of the parks, I mean, that's really interesting reading. And then you have broken it down in initiatives, things that would improve the park. And yes, some of them are like a wish list, but that's okay. You know, you have to be thinking ahead. So I think that's really good. And it is, it's a very colorful report. It's just very well done, very easy to read, easy to find the information. There's also the survey that was sent out that people responded to, that information is in there as well. So yeah, I think it's just a really good composite view of our park system.
I will point out, we did also add the history information, the history and amenities at the parks. That is now the information that's on our website for each park. And that's an area where it's easy to get distracted if you're in my position, whereas you're going through, there's so much interesting history of, you know, Smith Park and Legion Park and Indian Park. And all these different parks have a really good history in addition to simply being, you know, an active park that's used by community today, looking at how that park was used in the past. I would highly encourage, especially Smith Park, if anyone is interested in, you know, any of the movements that took place in Smith Park, it really is a fascinating story.
Okay. And Luke, I think you have some openings on the Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee coming up.
We would certainly love to get more, more members. I hate to be like, not the hard work, but there's still always exciting things going on, but we'd certainly love to have, I believe we have two openings at this point if anyone is interested.
So you don't have to plan now, you need implementers.
We need implementers, although we're always looking for ideas. Like I said, this is, this is a draft.
Ideas and implementers, okay. So I think it's very well, will we move this to action?
This will be put on for action.
Action next time.
At the next meeting.
To accept the park. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I think it was a well-done plan. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda then is the quarterly update on the 2019 city goals. Are you prepared to do that, too?
I am.
Okay.
So each year, the council with staff input establishes the goals for the coming year. And our practice is then to provide quarterly updates to the council regarding progress towards those goals and those accomplishments. So the report that you have there in the packet just reports progress as of June 30th. And just to pull out a couple of things, we talked tonight about the event center and the council approved the additional request. So we've just talked about the Parks Master Plan, another item on our goals for 2019. And well, number six is complete except for punch list items. And that's another big project that the city has completed already this year. So if any council member has anything they'd like to mention or question, feel free.
Anybody with questions or comments on the progress on goals? It's actually pretty impressive when you read it. Pretty impressive. Lots going on.
There was a lot going on.
Lots going on. Okay. I think that, does anybody have any other comments on the quarterly goals? Otherwise, I think we're ready to move on to the work session, the scintillating, always exciting, long-range financial plan.
So we're going to relocate to...
To, oh, and we're going to relocate tonight to the Police Department Conference Room, kitty corner across the street because, because we felt that there would be a little more space in our...
A little more space for these things.
Sound quality. So we will move our meeting now, it's for the work session, kitty corner across the street, to the Police Department Conference Room. And we'll reconvene there at 8:30. That should give people time to get across the street and put away their computers. So thank you.